Very good. Good evening, welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of February 28th. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much Steve, for the folks at home, I've put up on the screen the agenda items we'll be discussing tonight. Very good. We will start with announcements, and I only have one announcement tonight, and that's just to let the folks know that the Office of the Aging Senior Friendship Center has been moved to the Red Hook Community Center. That's over on Fifth Street. The new site is going to occupy seventeen hundred and fifty square feet in the community center building, according to this press release by the county, including space for seniors activities, kitchen and office space. It's larger than the previous center, and it will afford seniors a greater opportunity to enjoy our Red Hook Community Center's offerings as well as the OFA services. And there was a ribbon-cutting ceremony that Council Person and Boden and I and Mickey Struinsky, who's in the audience, moved there. And there will be another grand opening event sometime in the middle of the month in March.
I think it's March 19th, yeah?
Yes, March 19th is sort of the penciled-in date for that. So we'll have more information about that. That's really the only announcement I have this evening. Does anybody else have any other announcements? Okay, very good. At this time, we will take public comments, and once again remind folks that we ask that you, possible can limit your comments to three minutes and to address the board, and you know, hopefully try to observe our rules of decorum in the process. Thank you, yes, Linda?
Linda Keeling, Petro Lane, Red Hook. I'd like to address the public hearing on February 13th, in which the way you treated me. During the public hearing, while I was reading what I wanted to say during the testimony, you stopped me halfway while I was reading and imposed a three-minute time limit because you didn't like the content of what I said. That's bullying and harassment, and I will not put up with it. I didn't put up with Bill O'Neill in 2010 when he bullied me and I filed a harassment charge with the police in the village. By imposing an arbitrary time limit, only applicable to me and not others, that's discrimination. Intimidation is also quality unbecoming of a supervisor. Over the last forty years with my involvement as a volunteer and employee, I have never experienced this kind of lack of staff ground so low that they are joining a union. That's never happened before, all because of you. And as I understand it, there's another Article 78 has been commenced on Local Law A. This is more taxpayer money wasted because you will not follow the rules for secret. If you can't do the job without pinching on citizens' rights and you ignore the laws, your resignation is welcome.
Okay. Thank you very much Linda, and I have just no response except to say that the previous town board back in 2010 adopted rules for these town board minutes, sorry, meetings, and they call for a three-minute time period for both public hearings and for a public comment period.
Usually that's done before people speak, not while they're speaking.
All right, very good. I believe that addresses that as well. So we will get started with our agenda if we would, folks. The first thing is the discussion of the 2017 audit document, and it's a very extensive document. Each year, the towns are required to file with the Comptroller's Office the results for the previous year in the beginning of the year. For towns our size, this report is due at the end of March. Typically, we filed it at the end of February. I do have an obligation to report to the town board the highlights of the fiscal year previously by the end of February, so that's what I'm going to attempt to do, is really just highlight a few things, the document. When it is submitted to the Comptroller's Office, will be available in the town clerk's office and will be, of course, a public document for all to see. Right, again, this references the Comptroller Annual Report, which is in draft form, but just to give you some highlights. And for the board members here, you have some budget adjustments, some allocations that were prepared by Ann Conway, which are also part and parcel of the final results. And I wondered if you have any questions? I'm going to cover a couple things as we review the end-of-year figures here. Highlights of 2017, essentially, we are happy to report that there has been a continuance of the increase in fund balances. That's in all of our major accounts. That is also taking into account that we have completed some projects, and we are also setting aside money for next year's capital projects as well related to recreation. Standard and Poor's, you've seen this before from last year's budget discussion. The town now has a rating of double A. It's been upgraded since 2015, and the most recent one, the Comptroller's Local Fiscal Stress Report, shows our factor to be 1.7%, which is nearly a perfect rating. So some of the things that we did accomplish in 2017, and the results of these financial statements show that the Route 9 sidewalk project was fully funded and is taken into account in 2017. Despite needing to make some change orders, we brought that project in approximately $50,000 less than the bid amount, and so we're very happy about that. We negotiated a lower price Town Hall campus. We closed early in 2017 on a parcel, approximately an acre, that adjoins our municipal lands and will be moving forward this year to try to design the campus moving into the future. Improvements to existing recreational parks and playgrounds. So as many of you already know, we are very close to completing a complete rebuild of our tennis courts, and those funds are taken into account in 2017. Financials, we expect additional expense, which will be offset by a grant that we have been awarded. We will be retrofitting town campus with clean energy and energy-efficient upgrades, insulation, new HVAC equipment, and also a solar on the highway garage as well. We've been replacing our aging highway vehicles and other equipment. We're sort of trying to respond to maybe deferred capital investment in that area, and so we have allocated in 2017 additional monies towards yet another truck that was unable to safely continue on the roadways. So we always want to acknowledge our partners who have given us lots of grants. This slide, I think we had during budget season. These are just some of the dollar amounts that we've received for different projects. We continue to reference any way we can to try to save money. We did have some staffing changes here in Town Hall, and that was able to save us some significant dollars in 2017. We did a refinancing of our debt, and we expect to have some lower utility costs when our solar, our municipal solar farm project is up and running. And we'll have more updates about that at our next meeting, but essentially NYSERDA is going to respond to the tariff that's been levied on solar panels by increasing their funding in the upcoming months. So that might dovetail nicely with the timing that we have on that project. The LED streetlight conversion, you have a memo on what the latest recommendation from the consortium is on that, on that project. While we went through a very laborious RFP, it turns out that the news may be even better than we expected and that we may have a turnkey approach that can save us even more money. So we have some recommended adjustments here in your folders, and I wanted to just let you know how that would impact our fund balance, and it's really a related, if you look at the A fund balance, that takes into account an additional allocation of $190,000 towards our rec projects. We have two very significant projects still to do. One is a redo of the playground equipment, and I think we're going to hear more about that March 13th, the recommendation. And then Rec Park West, which includes our challenger field. We have significant funds over or above what we needed in the A fund, and so allocating $190,000 will give us now over a million dollars that we can utilize between the grants and the bonding authorization from last year. And that still leaves us with an increase in our A fund reserves of over $70,000, so that we've had a very strong year in 2017. B fund, DB fund, also some increases, and that reflects some additional funding that was needed for the sidewalk project, which went from the B to the DB, and we'll see that when we go to look at the expenses for the year. Our community preservation fund, Harry, as you like to look at, that ended the year with $986,000, and that included closing on farm land protection rights on a property just outside of Tivoli, the Stickell Farm. And there are some of our minor funds there, and you see that there are increases there as well. Doing budget versus actual is a little tricky this year because we had to continue to run some money from B to DB. DB was the funding source for the sidewalk project. But if you look at this chart, it just gives you some idea of what transpired. We had good expense management in all of our funds. You'll notice that the expenditures in the DB fund are higher than what was the first budget in 2017, but that's really only a result of the fact that we allocated money for that truck, which was over $100,000, so there was good expense management also in the DB fund. We had additional revenues in A, B, and DB. And so you'll see here the totals, and you'll see that in many cases the actual figures in all three funds really were lower than the original budget, again, taking into account that that truck was not expected but was funded in the DB. Yeah, I think that sort of covers the main points of the presentation. I don't want to bore you with all the details, but we want the folks at home to know that, you know, the finances of the town of Red Hook are really stellar, and we hope they continue that way. We've been able to do that now with two years of no tax increases. I don't think I need to tell anybody that we need to do everything we can to continue that as long as possible because we got a, we all got a huge, or many of us got a huge tax increase with that new tax bill. Many folks are unable to fully deduct their taxes, whether it's their property tax or their state taxes, and we know that actually because we had a few hundred folks come in, right Sue, to prepay their taxes in 2017. Over 300 people, and that was just the folks who knew about it and had that ability to come in and prepay. And so yes, the impact of that tax bill could be in the thousands for many people. So that's all I have for sort of a rough presentation. You have the expensive draft document. You have these adjustments that Ann has prepared, and I'm wondering if you have any questions? And Ann would be with us tonight, except she's under the weather. Hopefully, we'll have her next year, or we can have her at the next meeting if you have some questions, or feel free to reach out to her if you have any detailed questions on many of these reports.
Would it be possible to show, I know you're talking about everything, all the numbers you've mentioned sound great. I'm wondering to help people visualize, one way to talk about our fiscal health is the, like, the proportion of fund balance to what our, I guess, expenses or appropriations can be? Is one way that the Comptroller's Office measures fiscal health, right? I know it's only one measure, but is there a way to show that to people so that they can understand?
Sure, sure.
Or, you know, to, I know we don't have a graphic probably prepared, but...
I don't, but yes, we can, we can show you the reserve fund versus what we tax for each one of those funds to give you a certain percentage. But one of the things that I learned from the Association of Towns at our last conference last week is that they never give recommendations. We know that about what percentage is a healthy percentage, but we are bumping up against what they consider to be too much. They don't like to see a municipality with an annual tax levy amount that is also applicable to the unappropriated fund balance. So one of the things that I would like to do is work on and propose to you a reserve fund balance policy, and we can take a look at what other municipalities are doing and see if that's something you might be interested in in the upcoming months. I think that might be an exercise, even if we don't adopt one, that could be informative for us.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept these budget adjustments.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. And again, when this is filed with the Comptroller's Office, there will be copies available here in Town Hall. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda is DMJS. It is a resolution to authorize acceptance of easements regarding DMAJS, I think is correct.
And Mr. Supervisor, before you consider the resolution itself, we will need to review seeker procedures?
Exactly right, we have several seeker documents here or prepared for us. And we will start with our short EAF.
And I don't know that we've talked about this at the board at any great length, but I see that you're putting the, one of the graphics stuff on the board, so it might help the board to just quickly look at each of these graphics. That is one of them, if you want to stay on that for a minute.
I think I want to stay on this one, this is the big picture. So they can get contents of it first, does that make sense?
Sure, so this is the subdivision plan, and we have two different spots where, yeah. Pull it up a little bit more. So there's a spot at the end of Cedar Drive that the highway department has traditionally turned around in and deposited snow. So one of these easements relates to continuing that relationship.
That would be over here where I'm trying to circle, okay?
That's right, and then the other easement, if you move down the other way.
Okay, if I can?
Yes. Or pop up the small easement, that would work too.
Yeah, why don't I do that?
So that's the first one that we were just talking about, right? I think we'll have to have these maps before we talk about the text.
Okay, is that helpful?
Right, there's a common driveway that will serve these new, this road isn't here yet. This is a common driveway that will be serving the new lots. There's an exit there, which is the main exit for these lots off of Birchwood, right Theresa?
Yep.
Birchwood Drive, yeah.
And Theresa had pointed out that there are drainage features that are going to, while they're starting out on the town right of way and they affect the town entrance, the driveway entrance effectively, they exit out on, because of the topography there, they are designed to exit out onto the owner's property off of the right of way. So the second easement document is some added language into what would normally be just a regular common driveway easement among them, lot owners there, that would require that they allow, their responsibility is to maintain those. They're essentially what, two, the two drainage features are?
I think it's a catch basin.
Catch basins, yeah. So they would be responsible for maintaining those, but if they did not for some reason, Theresa wanted the right to be able to go in there and clean them out if she needed to to avoid a problem with the town road. So that's what the second one is about, okay?
Is a maintenance easement.
Correct. Okay, so...
All right, so going back to our seeker documents.
Right, so we have a short EAF that was prepared by the engineer for the applicant, and that simply, again, we're not at this point reviewing the subdivision as a whole. That was already done by the planning board, but they did an uncoordinated review. So because of that, we have to do our own review of this particular action, which is just considering these easements. There are, I mean, this subdivision was already approved a year ago. So these are just part of the conditions that are included in the planning board's approval, these easement issues.
Right.
So the EAF, which we circulated ahead of time, so hopefully everybody had a chance to look at it, just describes this particular project, and you can see attached the little map, there's the one map there and the other one that you have up there. And then Michelle prepared for us to review a Part II impact assessment, which indicates that it's expected that no or small impact will occur with respect to all of the identified land use plan, user intensity, character qualities, traffic levels, energy use, and so forth. These are all just related to, again, just taking these easements. One of them is just continuing existing, the other is some fairly minor drainage features on the, on the, at the entrance to the driveway. So the next document that you should have, let's see, is...
She has a NEG deck.
She has a Part II and III, yes, okay, so she has a NEG deck. And in her Part III, she simply indicates that no moderate to large impacts item identified, no significant adverse impacts will occur in her proposed Part III. And then she does have a draft negative declaration, which you'll see attached to a draft resolution adopting a negative declaration. And that recites that the subdivision has previously received final subdivision plan approval in an uncoordinated review, NEG deck in an uncoordinated review, and that identifies where the property is, which we just discussed, reviews the short EAF, reviews the thresholds, determines that it's not in the ninth district, and indicates the town's considered criteria and adopts the negative declaration that Michelle has prepared, and that indicates and describes the project as the two easements for this subdivision. Describes the access through the common driveway from Birchwood and the new drainage features and the turnaround that we just discussed. And that's the seeker, and I don't know, Theresa, did you want to add anything?
No.
Okay, Doug? Okay, if you're, yeah, Doug's obviously there, if you have any questions.
Well, yeah, thank you all for bringing this to, you know, to this point to this extent. I know it was a lot of work, and I appreciate it. Overlooking unnecessary, so we have two resolutions. The first one is the NEG deck, and that would be resolution number...
Ten.
Ten, thank you, Sid. Date of February 28th, adopting the NEG declaration regarding, regarding as opposed to regrading DMAJS easements. And we, I'll spare you the whereas's, but the subdivision was approved all the way back in December of 2016. So if you want to know how long it takes to develop property in Red Hook, you now know. The town board has received an offer of two easements from an applicant, and it's located in our one and a half district on Edgewood Drive and Cedar Drive and Birchwood, Overlook Drive in the town of Red Hook, Dutchess County. We've prepared, they've prepared a short environmental assessment form, which we have reviewed, and it's been accepted by us. Whereas comparing the thresholds, we've determined that the acceptance of the easements constitutes an unlisted action, and we will undertake an uncoordinated review of proposed acceptance of the easements referred to herein. Now therefore be resolved, the town board of the town of Red Hook has adopted this negative declaration and determines that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and we've prepared a statement, an iso-mo.
Second.
Any further discussion?
You know, we could just say for anybody who doesn't realize what an uncoordinated review is, just because that sounds really clumsy, but all it means, right, is that both boards, the planning board did its part, we're doing our part. We didn't, like, meet together to do it as like one big project. We kind of looked at each piece that we were responsible for, is that sort of the...
So when certain projects, type one projects, have to be reviewed in a coordinated view, which means one agency will declare lead agency status, and then it will undertake the review on behalf of all of the agencies that have to consider environmental impacts.
Right.
The uncoordinated review is permitted where a project is an unlisted action, less likely to result in significant impacts, but still needs a seeker review.
Right.
So each agency may undertake a thorough review of the impacts.
Great.
Right, okay, very good. And all in favor?
Aye.
Iso-mo. Resolution number 11, that would be authorizing the acceptance of these two maintenance easements. And the whereas's essentially reiterate the project and therefore be resolved that the town board accepts the offer of these permanent easements and maintenance agreement, and iso-mo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much for really working on that. All right, item number three is a discussion of a resolution on the LED streetlight RFP project, and you all have received the memo, and this was a very lengthy and a learning experience, quite frankly. We put in a lot of time and energy and effort on this, working with consortium, offering to be the lead applicant with eighteen municipalities to do the streetlight project, and Chris Shaw has helped us out tremendously to understand just... just how you do these kinds of things. Um interestingly enough, we had uh the results of three bids. And what essentially happened was that the the three bids had some deficiencies, um only a minor one really with uh the third bid. That third bid was like the second highest bid was just way higher than any price that was estimated. Um the lowest bid, which was not responsive enough, um with some of the detail for the ongoing maintenance, um was for the, from a public entity, as it turns out, the New York Power Authority. And so um we would have perhaps awarded to NICA, but unfortunately, they did not fulfill some of the requirements of the RFP. That's the bad news. The good news, however, is that during the course of this exercise, NICA decided that they were in fact uh wanting to work with small municipalities to do streetlight conversion. And the governor decided that he wanted to uh provide additional funding for this. Um NICA went out and uh bought half a million light bulbs, streetlight bulbs for uh communities such as ours. And so the recommendation from the consortium is to set aside the bids because of those deficiencies and the fact that the one that was nearly complete was way, way above what was budgeted for the project. And um so the recommendation is to set it aside. We're going to get another memo, I think, between now and our next meeting that talks about um the opportunity that exists with the New York Power Authority to do a turnkey solution where we won't have to piece new like the way we did uh for this RFP. And so I don't know if you have any uh questions about this, um before we go ahead and entertain. Um would you like me to sort of read off some
So I just want to add that, yeah, I just want to add that to remind the board that we are serving as the lead for this group of municipalities in this particular RFP. We signed an IMA with them so that we could serve in that capacity. So when you are reviewing this, um it was reviewed um with the help of your consulting consortium that was provided by NYSERTA, um uh but with all of the municipalities that were involved, involved in the uh the review aspects. But you're the one who will be making the decision about the RFP and and its results. So this will, this will be the um, you know, essentially binding on everybody else in the process. I just want you to understand that. And then um you know, going forward, you can, you can uh have the re- you know, recommendation from the consultant desk of what they want uh to propose next.
Yeah. Very good. I think it's very exciting, the uh pricing that um when we were asking for clarification for NICA, the pricing that they received on these lights are terrific. George Woodbury, who's been working with the consortium, said essentially he can't touch the pricing for the bulbs. It's just that they went out and did their own RFP. And so um and they guaranteed, NICA has guaranteed um pricing for municipalities that work through this program. It's a little bit like going directly to NYSERTA. You know, you're you're taking advantage of a program at this point. And so I think we'll, we'll have very good results um moving forward.
Good.
Good.
I really appreciate the detail in this memo, really helping us understand what the process has been so far. And it's been such a complicated process. I know that you and you and Christine and others have, maybe Dennis, I don't know, have been, Matt Corning Strong have been working so hard on it. And so I appreciate that we get this very detailed but concise memo explaining to us that we understand what's going on. And um I think it seems like the right, the right move to go with what's recommended here in the memo and what you basically summarized. Um and I'm just really proud that Red Hook gets to be a part of this. I think it's exciting and I feel like, I don't know if it's wrong to us to think this, but that, you know, part of why those, like the governor and other, and NICA are willing to make moves they've made is because our consortium is, you know, but somebody has to be the one to say like, let's go ahead and try this. And you know, it's something that nobody has done before. So it's exciting and I'm really happy that we and proud that Red Hook gets to be a part of it and gets to be the lead, I think is really, really exciting. So thanks for leading on that.
Do you have any um the size of bulbs that will be available or or
Lots of bulbs. You'll be very happy to hear Harry. Lots of choices. There's half a million of them. Don't worry, we won't let you go through them.
Does it happen? Yeah, but what is the intensity of bulbs? I mean, uh uh our our electric company only has two.
No, the nice
Bright and very bright.
Well, I I I don't want to, I don't want to give you a preview of the the recommendation upcoming, but the the way the program works with NICA is they not only will provide us with the bulbs and the installation and the maintenance through subcontractor contractors, they will provide us the design. And so you're going to get the design schematic that's going to show you all those three thousand Kelvin that you want. And you're going to get to look over that and and be able to comment on it and and see examples of the bulbs and everything.
Now they'll be using the same um fixtures that that uh Central Hudson has put up, right?
No, I don't believe they will be using the
They're not going to use that?
You're talking about the heads or you're talking about the bulbs?
Uh I'm talking about, well, the heads won't be the same. I know that.
Cobra heads.
Cobra heads. But what about the cobra, cobra arm?
The arm.
That will be this, that will be, I assume that will be kept.
Yeah, it will be kept. So let's take a look at the fixtures when when the time comes.
Yeah, yeah, that's But but I would like to see how many bulbs, variety of bulbs there are.
Yeah, there are lots. You'll be very happy. That was one of the downsides with going with utility is originally they only had one. Now I think they're up to three or four. So you'll have lots of choices. Okay, if there are no other uh questions on this topic, I would make a motion that we go ahead and take the recommendation and set aside the the bids for the RFP. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, we're now on uh item number four, which is reorganization. Somewhere in here is reorganization. Uh what we need to tackle tonight is we decrease the ZBA from seven to five. We have two openings. Uh the openings that are, exist are the vacancy in twenty eighteen that was created by Dudley's resignation and the vacancy um of twenty twenty one that was just created by Chris Muntz, a resignation. And so I would like to propose that we appoint our alternate, Kate Karakasus, to determine ending in twenty twenty one. I think Kate has a terrific background, a legal background, that I think uh will serve us well as a full uh board member. And I would like to make that motion.
Second.
Thank you very much, Harry. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then we have the vacancy um ending in twenty eighteen.
Well, I would like to uh recommend that we appoint uh Chris Carney to the uh term to be uh ended in two thousand and eighteen by uh resignation of Doug Lee. And appoint Chris Carney to that for that period of one year.
Okay, Chris has been on our ZBA now for several years. Um and was a holdover from a twenty sixteen term.
And I'm just asking, because I think I remember this, or maybe, oh, maybe it's included, or this is Chris's resignation. But I think I remember seeing a letter of interest in staying on from Chris Carney, between Chris's, but
Yeah.
I'm just trying to remember from maybe last year or some year in the past.
Yeah.
Um I just don't want to appoint somebody if they don't want to be on something.
If they don't want to, don't worry, they can always resign if they change their mind. Yeah. Okay. Um is there a second to Bill's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Is there any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So more
So that gives us five people, right?
That gives us five people on the board.
We just need a alternate or maybe two would be a good idea since we have
We are, we are interested if there are individuals who would like to be alternate on the zoning board of appeals, please, um if you'd be kind enough to send a letter of interest to Sue McCann and perhaps myself, Cece, and let us know. We'd, we'd welcome your interest.
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question? So um I see after the five members, it says seven year appointment. I thought
No, it's five years appointments now.
It's a five year, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure, just for our records.
Once it becomes five members, it's five year appointments. And that's why we have
Right.
Um those appointments ending in those words.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
Very good. Um there is also one uh other reorg, and that is a letter of interest for the water board. And I hope you receive that in your packet.
It's there.
Yeah.
And that's from Michael Roember, and it's a recommendation from Hank Ben Paris that um they go ahead and appoint Michael to the water board. He is interested in joining. He attended the February water board meeting and Hank recommends his appointment. And I would be happy to um, I know Michael a little bit. Um and I think his um letter is a very good expression of interest in why he might be good for the water department.
I would just say, um I I encouraged Michael to send in a letter because he, he sent to me a spreadsheet that he created on his own time after receiving his water bill. He lives in the water district. It was like a cost benefit analysis of whether or not to repaint the water tower. And he just, he had read the numbers in the water bill and he, he works in water infrastructure. That's one of his background specialties. And he just did that as something that he, it was sort of a question on his mind that he wanted to kind of game out the numbers. And so I forwarded that to Hank and I said, hey, if you have an opening, I want to talk to this guy. So I think Michael has attended at least one, maybe two water board meetings. And so I'm really happy to see that Hank feels like he would be a good addition because he's a young parent in the community. He lives in the water district. I think it's, you know, really great to have people aboard that has somebody like Hank who's so experienced and somebody like Michael who has the right experience and background, but newer to the community. I think that's really exciting. So I'd love to make that motion that he get um appointed to the water board.
Okay.
When is, is Charlie's five, so?
It would be, it's the one that is uh is vacant for this year, so it's a two year appointment.
So he'd be twenty nineteen?
Uh I guess so, twenty nineteen?
Michael Roember?
Yeah, it would be a twenty nineteen, yeah.
You have it.
It's looking at twenty nineteen, right?
So I think, Sue, you put him in a slot that says vacant twenty seventeen, right?
Right.
Oh.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Because you have two openings there.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was questioning.
Right, it's a good question.
Yeah.
Yeah, whichever one is a two year, I guess.
So it should be a twenty seventeen?
Well, if you want, I'm going to have the full two years or almost two years, twenty nineteen.
That'll be twenty nineteen.
Yeah, let's do that.
It would be the vacancy that says twenty seventeen, but now it'd be twenty
Okay, so I see we have two vacancies now. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. That's all we'll, we have for reorg. Uh can I?
Who, who?
I made the motion to second it.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, it'd be nice if you voted, wouldn't it be?
Well, I didn't, I didn't hear a second, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'd be happy to second that.
Don't blame Hank.
That works, huh?
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh number five is just a brief discussion on the Hoffman project. Um we need to figure out at our next meeting which engineer is going to represent the town board. As you know, we had the engineer, uh the principal uh review it for the planning board when it was the project in front of, in front of the planning board, excuse me, tripping over my tongue tonight. And that uh principal moved over to a different firm that we also have as an engineering firm here hired by the town. So we need to figure out between now and the next meeting which engineer is going to be representing the town for just a few issues that need to be closed on behalf of the town board for that project, which I think is, you know, uh coming out of maybe a dormant phase, at least as far as we see.
I've had several calls from the attorney for the applicant and I would really like to move these issues along, so.
Right. And I reached out to uh to get a proposal for a scope of services and hopefully we'll have that in the next few days, uh something to look at. And that is, of course, all that work is um billable to the the developer. Okay, very good. We have uh just board reports and committee reports and department reports left for this evening. And this is generally the portion of the evening where the mass is empty out of town hall. All right, very uh Okay, um we have a planning board report. Christine, would you be kind enough to, to uh read it for the folks or just a very quick summary would be, would be great.
Sure. Uh the uh planning board commenced or continued to review the following projects. Uh one, an application to establish an automotive, automotive service facility in the TND district. Two, an application to construct commercial multi-use buildings in a parcel in the TND CC district. Three, an application to install a prefabricated, pre-fabricated, I can't talk either, modular recycling building on the west side of the existing Hannover's parking lot. Four, an application to change the use from residential to mixed use on a property in the I institutional zoning district. Um next, a barred master plan special permit, um followed by an application to renovate and expand an existing ten-room motel to a nineteen-room motel in the RD three district and an application to construct a new residence in the hamlet of Upper Red Hook. And they had public hearings and or granted approval for an application to construct and operate a four hundred and fifty square foot farm market wa- farm market one with associated tent structure to house a beer garden for onsite consumption and small scale entertainment in the ag business district. And also an application to construct a residence in the historic overlay district. And in addition, the planning board responded to the town board's referral of local law A twenty eighteen.
Okay, very good, Christine. And just because we had a few folks here at the last meeting who um, you know, feel strongly about that project and um are not in favor of it, just for clarification, I think you said that that nineteen-room motel is in the R three, but it's actually in the B one zoning district with the remaining three acres in the R three.
Right, it's actually in both, you're right. Didn't say the B, you just said the RD three, but it does bisect or cross over those two districts, yeah.
Okay. Um we have um some yearly reports as well as monthly reports. Um one of the yearly reports is from the town of Red Hook Justice Court. So we have um first of all, Justice Martin. And uh he reports um how many cases, a total of which were in the several hundreds, three hundred and eighty-four B and T all the way to public health and penal and small claims and, you know, a little over four hundred and forty cases. Um and the revenue that was generated by those cases, we look at also unfortunately DWI, DWAI, and pending DWI cases of which there are about forty some odd. Um Justice Treebosser also uh puts forth his annual report. Also approximately three hundred and eighty cases. Um we have DWIs pending and completed, uh approximately forty. And the revenue generated from those fines to help pay for the court of thirty-eight thousand dollars in total. We have the Red Hook monthly dog control report. Sarah, would you be kind enough to give us just a summary on that? For January, yeah?
Yep, it's just January, so um being one of the colder months, we typically have pretty low volume in dog control. And it was that case this year. So far, we've had only one loose dog
We've had only one loose dog incident, and, um, it looks like there was a complaint about a dog that gets walked with no leash and does its business in other people's yards, so just a reminder, keep your dogs leashed, keep them in their fences, try to respect each other's property. Um, animal control does get these kinds of calls, and, um, you know, it's their job to respond to them, but, uh, we appreciate everybody taking care of their pets in a respectful manner. And that's it so far. Um, should I mention, we are working through some issues with the SPCA, and they're, um, they had a complaint by Ag and Markets, or maybe a complaint is maybe too strong a word, but they were put on notice by Ag and Markets that some of the ways their kennel is designed is not quite, or being run is not quite up to the Ag and Markets standard. So it's nothing about, uh, you know, cruelty toward animals or anything like that. They're just going to need to make some adjustments with how they are handling some of the larger dogs. So, just for the public to know that, but we're on top of it.
Great. Thank you very much. We also have a report from the assessor's office, Bill, if you'd be kind enough to, uh...
Well, the assessor's office has been very busy processing renewals and first-time applications for enhanced star senior and agricultural exemptions for two thousand and eighteen. They've had numerous inquiries concerning them, and the exemption applications are to be returned by the March one, two thousand and eighteen deadline. For the month of January, there was a total of twenty-two sales negotiated in the town of Red Hook, and, uh, the assessor's office has reviewed all of those. The highest sale price was three hundred and ninety thousand for a single-family residence in the town of Red Hook, the lowest hundred and twenty-five thousand, uh, for a condominium in, uh, Tivoli. And, uh, as always, uh, everybody has been cooperating with our new assessor, although she maybe now has become a veteran, but, uh, she's still relatively new, and we do appreciate all the work that the assessor's office is doing. And the assessor has indicated that they wanted to, uh, extend their appreciation to the cooperation they get from the supervisor and all the employees within the town of, uh, Red Hook.
Let's move forward. Thank you very much, Bill, we're very happy to have Cheryl, um, join the team here at, at town hall. It's a very busy time of year for many of our departments, and we thank you. If you've had to, um, wait, I don't think there have been extended waits, but, um, you know, uh, there are timeframes that can be. The town clerk's office and, and tax receiver's office has done a stellar job, as well as the assessor's office in receiving, um, lots of payments and forms, and we really do appreciate all the work that's being done, and we hope they get a little bit of rest but now that March is a day away. Uh, Harry, we have a, a report from building and zoning.
Okay, uh, for the month of February, there are eighteen permits, thirty-nine inspections, twenty-four certificates of occupancy issued. The total revenue for various fees was two thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars. And, and the building department tells me they are very busy and continuing to be, be busy. So it's a, it's a thriving, building is a thriving business in town.
Thank you very much. Um, Teresa, would you kind, would you like to make your report now?
Yes, please.
Teresa, okay, our highway superintendent is here to give her a report for, um...
So this, yeah, this is just intended as an overview. We're not looking for any answers, um, tonight. Uh, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them as well as we can. But we'll be bringing these up separately at different board meetings throughout the year. I just want to give you an overall view of what's going on, um, for the highway department. So the first, um, item is Stony Brook culvert. Um, the highway department has identified a large box culvert on Stony Brook Road that is in need of replacement or repair in the next two years. We have had it evaluated by Duchess County Soil and Water and by Crawford and Associates. I've attached the reports, um, for your review. The rough estimate for the repair is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, and the replacement estimates are between a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars and two hundred and four thousand dollars, depending on the construction method. However, these are engineered-generated estimates, and the cost may be reduced by using contract engineering, contractor engineering, or by bidding the engineering and construction separately, or perhaps, um, getting designs from Duchess County DPW, Department of Engineering, or Duchess County Soil and Water. Um, this particular culvert, along with the Sawkill and Aspenwall bridges, does not qualify for the current grant funding available from Bridge New York or the DEC estuary grant program. They have, um, qualifications, and these don't meet them. We have the engineer, um, look into it for a grant application, and unfortunately, we can't do that, so. Uh, our paving projects this year will be, um, Kid Lane, Sang Stack, and Stony Brook Roads. Uh, Kid Lane had been on the highway department paving scheduled for two thousand and seventeen. Due to the reconstruction of the bridge in Tivoli, Kid Lane was a designated detour. In order to keep the traffic moving, we decided to hold off on paving until this year. Um, the highway department plans to pave all three roads. Um, by grouping the paving projects, because they're all near each other in Tivoli, um, we will be able to bid out with greater efficiency, since the contractor's equipment mobilization cost will be minimal. Uh, the three roads have been identified as deficient by the Cornell Local Roads pavement management report, and they have not been paved in over fifteen years. Uh, the intended construction method is a two-and-a-half inch asphalt overlife without changing the current road bits. Um, safety and paving evaluation for Echo Valley Road, including comparison costs of road resurfacing versus reconstruction. Echo Valley Road from the county bridge to State Route one ninety-nine was designed and constructed in nineteen eighty-six. It's twenty-six feet wide with extensive culverts, catch basins, and drainage features in the roadbed along the shoulders. The highway department had proposed a simple overlay in two thousand and sixteen. The town supervisor had reached out to several residents of the road and wanted to explore alternatives such as narrowing the road for the sake of safety. I would like to propose that the town consider a safety assessment before making any physical changes on the road. If we involve residents, the highway department, engineering, and construction personnel, um, we can make an informed decision on the best way forward, both in terms of safety for the residents and the overall cost of reconstruction. I have attached an article from the Cornell Local Roads program that addresses a similar situation and outlines the steps that we can take to do this assessment for Echo Valley Road. I'm reaching out to David Orr of Cornell Local Roads program to ask him if he would be available to participate. The road needs attention, and we would budget the work for next year. So this is an informal safety assessment where you get eight or ten people involved. We did something similar on Route ninety-eight. And we're able to come up with some alternatives and some, some understanding of what is really going on Echo Valley Road. So, uh, I did reach out to David Orr, he said he would be available, hopefully sometime before the end of May, and I will, um, give the board more information on the intent of the project and who would be involved. So I think that it would be a good opportunity to just study it and then see where we're going. Um, the fencing and purpose of the annexed property that was discussed earlier, formerly Howland Next Door. Um, the town has purchased a piece of property adjacent to the highway garage property. Uh, originally, we thought it was intended to expand the highway garage lot. We have been asked to clear the debris pile that is on the property, uh, which we will not be able to do until we have a usable dump truck, and if and when the ground is firm enough to support the weight of the trucks, because there's no actual road into that property or driveway at this point in time. Um, we'd like to know what use is intended for the land and if there are plans to fence the property. Currently, there's no fencing along the southeast to the southwest corner, and this leaves the annex vulnerable to dumping of brush and debris. We don't want to take the pile away and then have it grow again. And, uh, we want to see that the whole campus is secured with some kind of fencing over there. People do use it as a cut-through, um, on foot to get to recycling. He still has access, Mr. Howland, from his property. Uh, the dump truck needed for heavy-duty highway work. The town highway department had a twenty-four-year-old dump truck, which was used year-round for hauling and dumping of heavy materials and tree stumps. It failed inspection this past year and almost sold at auction. This was one of the three trucks that we lost in about six months. We were looking at, um, we are asking that it be replaced this year in order to continue with routine highway operations. We were looking at used vehicles, but we found that the inexpensive trucks were in terrible shape. People just beat them up. Buying used at a higher cost does not make financial sense when a new vehicle is under warranty and does not have prior issues. A rough estimate for a new dump truck with a heavy-duty dump body is ninety thousand dollars. This may be purchased off the lot, it does not have to be built to order like a plow truck, and the highway department would need authorization from the town board, as well as a funding source in order to purchase the vehicle. And the last thing on my list is mailbox guidelines. Currently, the town of Red Hook does not have specific guidelines for mailbox installation on town roads. We have seen an increase in improper and unsafe mailbox posts, and we would like to have a document in place that would educate residents and enable the highway department to remove illegal obstructions. I have attached a sample regulation on mailboxes, and I would recommend adding an installation process and diagram to the town of Red Hook highway specifications. The sample was included in the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, that's ASHTO, publication on erecting mailboxes on highways, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's very effective, and this way we'd have some kind of backup if we have to go out there and tell someone that their cement post or whatever they're putting in is really a hazard to the traveling public and not a deterrent to knocking the mailbox over.
Well, it sounds like a really great candy for our, our future Facebook page and posts to let the public know.
There's even a little bit on our new website.
I love it, that's great, even better.
Can be hazardous to your health.
We'll post it every month until people start, uh, because, I mean, what you said about, you know, it'd be great to get people before they install the new mailbox.
Yes.
I mean, rather than have to come, let them retroactively after they've made.
We already have the, the, um, driveway specifications that includes a mailbox apron. If we could put that in along with it, and then it's usually speaks to the, um, uh, post office regulations.
Yeah.
It would be one nice neat package for people coming in.
Yeah, that's great.
So, that's all I have.
Great, thank you very much, Teresa, that's enough, that's funny. Yeah, that's a lot of stuff to work on. Um, I'm looking right on it, okay. Bill, we have a Red Hook Police Department on board.
For the past month, the, uh, Village of Red Hook Police, um, in the contract with the town of Red Hook, they had, uh, reported total incidents, uh, for the period of seventy-five. And, uh, of that, they made nine arrests and issued a total of thirty-seven tickets in the past month.
Okay, very good, thank you very much. Uh, we have a water district report, Mary, if you'd be kind enough to summarize.
I will. The water, uh, for, for this month, month has moved, uh, has moved, moved through from the, from the well to the homes, uh, as, as, uh, as in the past. There's been the usual maintenance done and, and in terms of replacing filters with, and chemical tests, and that, all of which, uh, we have passed with flying colors. The level of water in the wells has, and the quantity of water available out of the wells has been, uh, has been doing very well. Well, two is, is resting for a month. We, we actually can function on well one, which, on, on either one or two, independent of the other well, which is, uh, is great to have, in other words, a, a double capacity, which has saved us from a lot of grief in the past. Um, but there's a, we need a new pump control, which will have to be done. Uh, there's really a, a, a maintenance kind of, kind of project to replace them periodically. And basically, uh, we're, we're looking at the storage tank and, uh, what, what, what its life, life is likely to be, and how we can, uh, extend that life as much as possible.
That's right, and also prepare for the time when we do need to either repaint or replace the water tank. Um, we're not waiting until the last minute to, to do that and make sure that we accumulate sufficient funds. We do have healthy reserves, as you saw earlier tonight. Um, but we want to make sure that we don't have a sudden increase in rates because of, uh, replacement or repainting. So we have our engineers working on that, and we hope to have more for you later this year. And Harry, if you'd be kind enough to explain to everybody, number five on the front page, please, nephalm metric, if you could just give us a concise definition of what that word is.
Turbidity?
No, neph, look the right below it.
Well, I don't know what neph- nephalm metric.
Neither do I, that's where.
Turbidity is, but turbidity is, is the clearness of the water.
Well, that I know, I just didn't know that other word, and I wondered if you did.
Well, yeah, that, that.
I'm going to look it up now.
You have to be from another planet to know that.
I've heard that before, okay. Um, Harry, while we have you here, would you be kind enough to give us a, a brief summation of the EDC?
Well, the EDC has been meeting every two weeks, discussing, discussing, uh, things going on in the village, which is, of course, a major, uh, major element of our economy here, here in town. And, um, the silver is always on the agenda, and, and we're, and they've always been looking at, at, at development, um, mar- marketing development in, in the community. And, uh, actually, they, they have, um, have been very effective in, in working together and helping each other, um, uh, with, with their, with their business ventures.
Okay, and if you're interested in finding out more about the Economic Development Committee, they meet, uh, every other Wednesday at eight-thirty, and that's in Village Hall, not here in Town Hall. They do it in Village Hall because it's convenient for those folks, uh, the vote, the time and location. Bill, would you be kind enough to give a, a report on the intermunicipal task force?
Well, the weekly meetings in January, February, the task force discussed the local waterfront revitalization plan for the town of Red Hook based upon a grant obtained for the purpose of updating our LWRP. They began a review of proposed zoning being considered by the Village of Red Hook to be coordinated with zoning in the adjacent town of Red Hook, as contemplated by the Working Group Report of two thousand and four, and, uh, reviewed our recently enacted solar energy law for the town of Red Hook in anticipation of a scenic Hudson Incorporated-sponsored symposium, which is going to be held at the FDR Library in Hyde Park, March twenty-seventh this year, to provide critical insight into how we can navigate the tough issues surrounding the rapid development of solar energy projects in the region in support of meeting New York's ambitious carbon emissions reduction goals.
Thank you very much, Bill. Harry, we have a rec. commission report.
Okay, I'm going to read three pages.
Oh, no, Harry, please don't.
Only three out of the six, so, okay.
The tennis court project, uh, has been resting over the, over the winter. It was half-done in the fall, and this spring it will be finished. We hope to have it, uh, usable by June. Um, we, uh, we have, um, a tennis court grant possibility for reimbursement from the, the U.S. Tennis Association for part of it. The playground committee is, has, uh, pretty much completed their recommendations as to, uh, upgrading the playground to the, um, to the satisfaction of, of the one-to-five-year-olds. Does that range?
No, five to twelve.
Five to twelve?
Two, two to twelve.
Two to twelve, okay. The locust, there are locust trees that have outlived there and are dangerous, actually, in that playground area. They'll be, they will be gone before summer starts. And we had to move a number of trees out of the Sawkill Creek, uh, that were done kind of upstream from the, from the, from the park, because they were, they were causing, uh, water problems and damming of, of the Sawkill. And in, and April, April first, we will have our usual fishing contest.
Okay.
Um, can I just say a couple more things?
Sure.
Since I'm also a recommission person, and I've been looking over their project. So a couple of things, um, one is that, yes, ne- next meeting, March thirteenth, we're gonna hopefully come with a full, um, view of the new, uh, the proposed plans for a new playground over the, uh... for a new playground over in the Red Park East, the current main Red Park. So, that's exciting. And, um, I just wanted to draw attention to two things. One is the fallen trees that Harry mentioned. What I love about this report and it talks about how John reached out out of concern for the trees and the Sawkill to the Sawkill watershed people and they've been advising him on how to handle the situation. And I just love that both groups are able to work together on this and figure out a solution that's environmentally, you know, sound, but also, uh, you know, cost-effective and works for the town. And the other thing is that, um, I just wanna draw attention to John's mention that at this point, the recycling containers, which have been, we really hoped would be so, such a great thing to have, are not really being used effectively, that there's a lot of trash that keeps getting mingled in there, which really then ruins the recycling and, and makes the whole recycling dumpster a waste of money. So, we really need to look at that and I just wanna say that on Panda because the Conservation Advisory Council meetings aren't on Panda, that, you know, we really need to figure out a way to do maybe some kind of public education campaign, better signs, I don't know what, but, 'cause we have plenty of trash cans. It's not like there isn't a spot for people to put whatever they need. Anyway, we gotta figure out a solution, but I think the CUC is gonna work on that. So, hopefully, maybe this'll be the year.
That's great. Um, very good. Thank you very much. Um, I guess I'm reporting on the Senior Services Committee. Uh, they had a meeting at the end of January and it was with, uh, Miriam McCullough, who's the executive director of Friends and Family of Senior Companionship. She was a guest speaker. She had to reschedule, uh, to this month. Um, the committee discussed, give a child a summer meal food drive. And it's in the process of developing a plan for another, a food drive geared specifically to benefit low-income seniors here in the community. And, um, they're gonna be working with the management at Red Hook Commons. And I think that's pretty much it for that. Uh, we have a Tree Preservation Committee monthly report. Sarah, assess the...
Linda, do you wanna give? Since you're the second, okay, all right. Do my best. Okay, so this is the report for February from the Tree Preservation Commission. Okay, um, oh, they've been pruning trees in the Red Church Cemetery. I believe they're all finished now. This says they have four more to go, but I think they're done now, right? Yeah, so that's really wonderful. Um, hopefully that will result in healthier trees. We really appreciate that volunteer effort. Saves us a lot of money. Um, and there are five committee members who are planning to attend the Tree City Recognition Ceremony luncheon. What is this, the year, what year is this that we've been a tree city of, you know? Twelve?
Twelve or thirteen, something like that.
Really?
But this, it's twelve.
You're twelve of Tree City status, so that's wonderful. Um, there's gonna be an Arbor Day celebration, as always, here. This year it will be Saturday, April twenty-eighth. Mark your calendars now. Don't miss it. There'll be tree giveaways and activities and all kinds of stuff, right? Um, and then, um, they're working on the tree order for Petrolane. So, that's exciting. A new assortment of red oak, red maple and sugar maple. So, that's all very carefully chosen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I have something along those lines? Um, the Exora tree that's in the green there is alive and well and starting to bud.
Great.
So, it made it through the winter.
A little, a little too early to bud there.
Confused as, as are the rest of us with this warm weather.
What is starting to create up? Well, if you jog my memory with the, the, um, tree, the city recognition, is that I noticed trees, maybe you, um, might have as well, the sign entering from the east that says where a tree city is now at this, uh, angle. I don't know. That's probably our sign, maybe?
It's our sign. I didn't notice.
Yeah.
If you send me an email, we'll see what can be done. I don't know if we installed that sign though, but we're just gonna stay right.
No, it's fine. It's fine. It just, it's like the, the, maybe the, the DOT cloud editor or something. It looks like it just needs to be, um, uprightened, that's all. But it doesn't look damaged. It's just literally at this kind of an angle. Um, Sarah, there's a mini, there's a subcommittee, a CAC, um...
Extraction Working Group.
Yeah, this, the Extraction Working Group, okay?
That's what we call it, the Extraction, the EWT Extraction Working Group. So, this is the group that's chaired by Julia Solomon, um, who's from the CAC and it's working on some recommendations to the town board, um, funded by that grant we got from Greenway, um, that, uh, was necessitated by us noticing that we need to work on what kinds of policies and laws and what have you that we have, um, for all manner of extraction, soil mining, um, tree cutting, water collection, the whole nine. So, um, yeah, so it's an interesting, eclectic group of people who have specialties in all those areas and planners and, um, we, so I'll just go down the... We've met, I think, three or four times and, um, I haven't been, you know, sometimes it's the whole group, sometimes it's, it's pieces, so it's a lean, mean machine. Um, but they have, we've met with the consultants, Green Plan and Cheesin Companies. We've discussed and shared information with Peace Land Use Law Center and Cornell Cooperative Extension and the Sawkill Watershed Community and commenced some best practice research on the three topics. And kind of started to also do a, a really thorough comb through of the code to try to understand what's there now, what might need to be clarified, all that stuff. So, I think Julia just wanted to report to the boards that you know what the progress is. And I think once there are some, once they're closer to recommendations, they'll bring a more formal report to the board so you can, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much with that. Those are, I believe, all our committee boards and department reports unless somebody else has any other. Um, if not, we're approaching the end of the meeting. I just wanted to bring to your attention, we have some correspondents who are going to honor, um, at a ceremony in less than two weeks. Um, yet another Eagle Scout. This is Tyler Benincasa. And Tyler earned his, actually, he earned that rank, uh, last year. Um, the ceremony's gonna be held March tenth, uh, for him. And it doesn't say here, but I believe it's in Upper Red Hook. And, um, he, this Eagle Scout project was to build an enclosure for the goats, which are used to control the brush growth at Wilderstein Historic Site. So, you can imagine that the town supervisor is very proud of this young man because it's a goat-related project. So... How many goats today?
Oh, and a llama, too.
Uh, well, you know, the llamas don't clear as well as the goats do, but, um, they are, they are cute. Um, so, there'll be a ceremony for him on March tenth and, and we, uh, would just like to, uh, mention his achieving that rank. Okay, before I make a motion to go into attorney-client, um, is there any other public comments for this evening? Okay. Sorry, Linda, yeah?
I just wanna thank Teresa and her crew. They've been going around during this nice weather and filling in the potholes and it just shows how much they care for our community to make it workable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're very appreciative. Yes, we, they've taken great care of our roads during the storms, the unpredictable storms that we've had. Probably be more potholes after Friday, Saturday, because the Zanor East are expected with mostly rain, so hang tight. Okay, thank you very much. Um, thank you all for joining us. Um, at this time, I would like to make a motion. We go into attorney-client session. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Good.
Good night. Thanks again.